I'm going to call the October 15th, 2024 Regular Council Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Myers.
Here.
DeShawn.
Here.
Shireman.
Here.
Moritz.
Here.
Sharick.
Here.
Hickman.
Here.
Me.
At this point in time, I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Is this something new that you put on here?
Yeah, I found it in the Roberts rules. Whoa, 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 Mr. Wireball. No talking from the audience. You should know about it. This is your first warning.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. DeShawn.
So I will ask the question, just so I understand. If we make a motion to approve the agenda as presented, what is that saying to you as the council president?
That means that you're not going to do what you did the last time at the meeting and start changing stuff around in the middle of the meeting. So if you want to change it, you change it right now.
Okay, so my next question to you is, what do you consider a change?
Anything veering from what's on this agenda.
So if we have a proposed ordinance or resolution on the agenda, and we are looking to have it referred back to committee, are you looking to that as a change?
We could, that's a good question.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Me.
35-2024, I'd like to put that back in committee.
You want to make a motion to send 35-2024 back to committee?
When I get the committee report, I would like to do that. That's the question.
It should probably be changed, if you want to, yeah, that's a good question. It's permissible, under Roberts rules, to make a motion to send something back during the time of it being discussed further along in the meeting. So if you want to do something with that at that time, I think if we did the motion to approve the agenda as presented now, it shouldn't affect your ability to...
If we approve the agenda, then it will put it back in committee. I haven't read this paragraph before.
Mr. President, I think we've spent too much time on this, and since it's obvious, you're not quite sure what it is you want this motion to do. I'm asking that we don't do a motion to approve the agenda as presented, and let's just continue on. And then you can do some more checking into it, and once you're assured of what it is you're wanting to happen, you can let us know, and then we can decide at that time if we want to do a motion later on at another meeting to approve the agenda.
Let's move on to motion to accept the minutes from the October 1st, 2024 Regular Council Meeting. October 1st, 2024 Regular Council Meeting.
I move to accept the October 1st, 2024 Regular Council Meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second that as presented.
All favor.
Aye.
All oppose. Granting permission for visitors to speak.
Greg White, 1125 Hill Crest Drive. Thank you, Mr. President. At the beginning...
Excuse me, Greg. Point of order, and not to you.
What's the point, Vicki?
Not to you, Greg. Your clock, it has always been past practice that the clock does not start until after the individual speaking has stated their name and address, because we as council are making that a requirement. I did check with Mr. Myers. He remembers that from before. I noticed at our last meeting, I was watching the audio at home, and you started the clock right at five minutes, when the person started to say their name. Also, at the last meeting, Mr. Miller did ask to come up and speak again. You stated that he could not come up, that he had exhausted all of his five minutes. He, in fact, had 10 seconds left on the clock, and that doesn't include the seconds that were taken away from him, because the clock was started at 5:00, which I added that to be two seconds. And then on top of that, it was necessary for Bonnie Welsh to come and work with the microphone, which Mr. Miller did ask for the clock to be stopped, but that was after it had already ran for like about two seconds. Bottom line is, there were about, was about 17 more seconds left that Mr. Miller could have spoke. So just want to make sure that clock does not start until after the person has said his or her name and address. Also, if anybody in council asks a question of the person that's speaking, that person's time is not to be eaten up by our questions. Thank you.
Okay, my ruling on the point of order that Vicki just called is I'm going to reset the clock. I'm going to allow Mr. White to state his name and address, and then after he states his name and address, I'm going to start the clock.
I need to take...
Whoa, whoa, whoa. There's, this is, did you call another point of order?
I need to walk out for a minute. Thank you. That's what I was asking for. But you ignored me. Thank you. I'll be right back.
Excuse us, Mr. White. I just wanted to make sure that you have the time that you're allowed.
I'm, okay, I just would like it recorded in the notes that Councilwoman Sharick has left the meeting without being asked to be excused from the meeting.
She tried.
Okay, Mr. White, you can start over.
Greg White, 1125 Hill Crest Drive. Thank you, Mr. President. At the beginning of this year, with many new council members that were elected by the people and for the people, I thought the changes in our local government, ways of conducting business, were going to be positive. I guess for most of us, this is far from the truth. Our city council has failed its citizens and has turned this into a total disaster. This council has not accomplished basically nothing in its first nine months. This is not the fault of all members of council. I know that some are trying to get things done, but are being held up by others. Why? Since every citizen has the right to redress their government and their elected officials and the freedom of speech by our forefathers, it seems that our federal, state, local governments and the people working for these governments are trying to take away these rights from the people each and every day. With that said, what is going on with this council? The community wants to know. Why aren't you telling the truth? What are you hiding from the people of this community? Who is trying to benefit from their position on this council? What I believe to be true is that some council members who don't show up for meetings because of work, wear T-shirts with Queen on it, and have a council member tell them to turn it inside out or backwards so they don't have to see it, attend several executive sessions of all councils, make a motion of legislation to purchase the YMCA building, vote for it, then approve the minutes of that meeting, and then state they know nothing about this. What about the hell-billy foul-mouthed by their own words, who makes a scene within a public area of the City Hall and spurs vulgar language to another person and doesn't think that this is sexual harassment? Goes off on a lawn force, an officer, with the same type of behavior, and now, well, how is that setting an example for the people of this community? What about a council member being removed from two ad hoc committees without due process? Neither of these committees voted for this removal, but certain council members want this to happen. Was this illegal? Why wasn't this done to other council members? What about the two council members who acted basically in the same manner during the meeting of a festival? Nothing was done to them. Council is not the prosecutor, judge, or nor jury. Let the real court system do their job in this manner. Does a member, does a council member have a history of bad, bad behavior against women, an alleged sex crime with a minor, and alleged misappropriations of funds within office within a local club, nonprofit organization? Did they resign or were removed from these two festival organizations? What about, what was the property purchased as a member of a board and was on council at the same time? Is a certain council member getting preferential treatment of legal documents from past and present law directors? Did each member of council get the same opportunity to do the same? Was this done before this person was elected to council? If this is true, why is this going on? Is this illegal under the color of law? Is this member, the mayor, the law director, council president, all in one? Did the voters vote on this? Why are these documents not sent back to the committees that requested this? Why didn't the committees vote on sending this to full council? Does the public have a right to redress their government on these documents? Was this done in a way to overstep the duties of their position on this council? Is this way to supersede the rules of procedure, Chapter 111, or someone else's authority? Were residents given these documents also? Why are a majority of this council in a special hate group called the Cardinians? Is one a top contributor? What kind of message is this sending to the citizens of our community? Is this illegal for elected officials to belong to special hate groups? Why don't they just come out publicly? Why are there so many citizens also in this group? Are these people coming to council meetings, helping out, bringing down this community? Are they behind some of these council members in deals, behind closed doors? Is one of these citizens a top contributor also? This quote, "Is it really one opinion to another if only you allow those in the same opinions speak on your forum?" I believe it's time for council to take a really good look at themselves. Is council making a mockery of this community? The community is watching the S show in large numbers. They are even having drinking contests, bingo, and other forms of events. Council has become live all over the United States and some other countries. This council is ready for a national TV show? Why would any business or company want to come to this community? It's time for, it's time for this show to end, or some of you to resign. Time will tell. Stay tuned for more. Thank you.
Gary Miller, 800 Rogers Street. First off...
Mr. Miller, before you start speaking, I just want to publicly apologize to you...
That was one thing I was going to bring up.
For the last meeting, I, I called Mr. Miller by name as a noise had come from the audience and disrupted the meeting, and after speaking with Mr. Miller, I found out that it wasn't him. It was another person in the audience, so...
Thank you for saving me 20 seconds. Gary Miller, 800 Rogers Street. First off, did you write that, what he just wrote, what he just said? You didn't. Sure sounded like things you talked to me about. You going to deny it?
I did not write that.
Okay, you had no input on that? Is that a lie, or is that the truth? Put your Bible on.
I have the Bible app on my phone.
That's the truth? You didn't have anything to do with that?
He writes his own letters.
Okay. The deal where you refused, you said I could not come back up and speak again, have we reviewed that? Because I was told that if it was about another subject, I could indeed come up during this initial public participation and talk, when you said I couldn't come up? Okay, stop my clock, because you're going to answer my question. Do we know? Did you, did the law director...
It's my understanding, if you come up and speak...
You're only allowed five minutes, and you're done.
You can't come up for a minute, go back, sit down.
No, I didn't say that. I did not, I didn't say that.
Somebody else come up for two minutes, and then you come back for another two minutes, and then to the whole five minutes, I mean, that would be ridiculous.
I didn't ask you that. I said if I stand up here for five minutes, and I talk about a subject, and I go back, and if I want to come up later and address another subject, you denied that. Is that the process or not?
I'm trying to maintain a meeting here, and if people keep coming back and up because they got 15 more seconds...
I've seen a certain council member come up here numerous times when they were in, when they were out here, might have been a committee meeting.
Well, the committee meetings have a little bit more...
Leeway?
Yeah.
Okay. So anyway, you never answered the question. Are you allowed to come back up after you spend five minutes on a subject? Are you allowed to come back up later to address another subject? I want a yes or no, or if you don't know, I want it...
I'm going to refer to our law director.
Now, when you say come back up later to talk about something, are you talking about...
During the public participation.
During the public participation.
I've already addressed a certain subject. I want to come back up and address another subject. Is that allowed?
It's my understanding that you get five minutes, period.
Total.
Total. To have your public participation, but later in the agenda, when you're going over...
If you're addressing that subject.
Right. Then you can come up and address that.
Okay.
But for the public participation, at the beginning, it's my understanding you only get the five minutes.
Okay. The call I know from Kurt, he apologized for that, so I do accept that apology. I suggest next time, before you do that, you make sure you're addressing the right person.
Mr. Miller, I'm going to interrupt you for a minute, if I may. Just so I'm understanding correctly, are you stopping the clock here?
The clock should have been stopped like six seconds ago, since you like to run that.
How about we just let Mr. Miller give his full presentation, and then we can note things that he says, and then we can respond to him. That way, we don't have to continually start and stop the clock.
Fine with that.
Continue, Mr. Miller.
Okay. The stopping of the reading of letters that you did the last regular meeting, you are the supreme ruler on what letter will be read, which I think council seriously needs to look into that, because both letters you denied were voted on by council and approved to be read. Now, they were both critical of you. If you take this position on any of these councils, you, you got to be able to take some criticism, okay? They were all, they were all, you know, kind of criticism to you. Nothing was slanderous, you know? So you, what was your basis on not allowing them? Stop the clock. I'm waiting for an answer. Or will you not answer?
Okay.
Why were they not allowed?
I'm speaking, Mr. Miller. In 2020, there was a thing that was being discussed up here, and I'm going to quote our former councilman, Mr. Wireball, which he specifically was sitting in the very back row of that meeting, and he, he yelled out, as somebody was speaking in public participation, trying to get an answer from somebody sitting behind the railing here, Mr. Wireball yelled out, "You are not under inquisition." Okay? So I'm not under inquisition right now. You have five minutes to speak, and I'm going to let you speak.
So you're not going to answer it, is what you're saying?
I'm going to let you continue right now.
Okay. We had a vote, I believe, to deduct money from Mrs. Shireman's pay. I believe the auditor said the only thing that had to be done was she had to receive something from you. Has that been done? I mean, isn't, isn't this public participation, oh, you're, okay, you're going to write it down and answer when I'm done? Okay. I believe that's all I have, so I'll, when are you going to answer these? Right now, when I walk away? Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes, Carol.
To update on my paycheck and to answer Mr. Miller, I will not be donating a dime of my paycheck, just so everybody understands. Thank you.
I'm still emailing back and forth between the law director on the pay deduction situation. Whoa, whoa, can't talk from the audience. Mr. Miller? This is your first warning on talking from the audience. Any other public participation, please come to the podium. Mr. Miller? It's your second warning from talking from the audience. Any other public participation?
Ken Long, 625 South Spring Street. This will be a really simple request. Can we get the speakers to work in the back of the room here, so we can hear better? Thank you.
Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Route 4. So I don't want to do a back and forth. I had emailed you and hadn't received any correspondence back, Mr. President. I was debating on bringing this up tonight, but I think, given the amount of negative discourse that just occurred in the first 20 minutes of this meeting, I had been looking into your proposal for an ad hoc committee. Committees are supposed to be for legislative questions. There isn't a legislative question currently, so it's kind of hard to establish a body to ask a question that there isn't one. It's more administration that would need to come up with a plan, and that does put a lot on Tommy and the mayor's desk to figure out. So I had done a lot of brainstorming and thinking on your olive branch that was extended. However, I feel that for too long, the safety forces have been used as a bargaining chip by politicians. It's something we all use, we all need. It's put up on a pedestal, say, make people feel good, but I feel like long-term problems need long-term solutions, so I propose that if you're still wanting to put forth something like that, that a commission for safety forces would be much more appropriate, as it would both embody the police and the fire and their long-term issues. It would also give them a place to essentially connect at and communicate through. I was on the Citizens of Bucyrus for Safer Bucyrus and the PAC meeting, and interacting with them, it's clear that not everyone has the information needed to do their job or to advocate well for themselves, so I believe it would be beneficial for both police and fire to have a place to connect with and have their voices heard, instead of it being a game of telephone through politicians, and then they would have a longstanding ability to advocate for themselves. With that final note, there was a lot of questions asked in public participation. There was a lot of criticism that I noted, and, you know, I find it incorrigible that you would sit there with a smug smile on your face while things are talking about the body that you're over yourself. You are the leader of this group of people, and to sit there and smile while such things are said about them and nodding in agreement is just, is pretty gross. So, thank you.
For the record, I'm not exactly sure when, but at some point here in the public participation, Councilwoman Sharick returned to the meeting, if that could just be noted in the minutes. Just responding to Mrs. Slater, since she directly said a couple things to myself, you don't have to wait until a piece of legislation is rolling through council to start a ad hoc committee. An ad hoc committee can be started way in advance. So the reference about the fire station needs is pressing. I drove past there two days ago, and one of the firemen's trucks, personal vehicles, was parked on the sidewalk. That's how bad the situation with the parking is down there, so... Continuing on, more public participation.
Hello, everyone. My name is Wanda Sharick, and I live at 1485 Oak Ridge Drive, Bucyrus, Ohio. And I came to council tonight because back in the '50s, Uncle Bruce was on this council. My father-in-law was mayor in the '60s. My sister-in-law was on this council for lord knows, I don't know how many years. The Sharicks have always been very supportive of the city, and I want to tell you that tonight, I am here to tell you that I'm proud of the city council for continuing to work for the people of Bucyrus. And I think that every city council member should make sure that when you come to council, you are here for the betterment of the city of Bucyrus. And anything outside of this, your personalities or whatever it is, really doesn't count. You're here for the people. You were elected for the people. You need to do the job for the people, and you don't need to be out there making fools of the city of Bucyrus any longer. So please, stand up, act like leaders, be the people who we want to have leading our community. And I will be proud of you, just like I was for the last 70 years that the Sharicks have been here. Thank you.
Joe Graham, 859 South Spring Street. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, taxpayers, voters back here. Mrs. Sharick, thank you. Thank you so much. She stole my thunder, kind of. Basically, the thing is that something that I've learned along the way between being a child and where I am now is that at some point in time, I have to say enough. Right now, there's poop flying around everywhere. Every single one of you is covered. I can't tell who started it anymore. Does it matter anymore? No, because we have the S show that another gentleman referred to going on, that people tune, tune into on a regular basis. That doesn't look good for us. There are big things out in the air for the city of Bucyrus, Ohio. There are big people looking right now. We've got Sarah here from the, from the partnership, and she's going to tell you some things, some amazing things about Bucyrus, about Crawford County. But what's happening right now, they're going to go over to Crestline, they're going to go to Galleon, they're going to go anywhere but Bucyrus. Why? Because we can't handle our own affairs. Now, when I look around this room, I don't see Republican, I don't see Democrat at all. I see citizens of Bucyrus, and you're passionate about it. That's what the, that's what the interplay is about. It's about your passion. I celebrate passion. I don't want people up here who are just going to rubber stamp everything, you know? I don't want people here who are going to do that. I want people who are passionate. But that passion has to be appropriate for where you are. Now, I understand. There have been some inappropriate things said and done here. I get that. But again, to echo Mrs. Sharick, and I'll shut up, please, someone stand up, be an adult, and say, "I'm not participating anymore." That's all it takes. One brave person, and then another brave person to follow. You know, it's a, I would like, I call on you, please, I beg of you, be brave. Be brave enough to sit aside whatever partisan stuff might be going on. This is Bucyrus, Ohio. It's not Washington, DC. They're 400 miles that way. I wouldn't set foot in that town right now for anything. I had someone ask me one time if I wanted to run, to have my name put in the ring, to run as Republican candidate for mayor. I said, "No, I can't stand the stench." And this kind of stuff is why. So how many people who are sitting out there watching right now would love to come in here, maybe love to run for a position of service in the, in the city, who won't do it? They don't want anything to do with a circus. I know so many of you, on a first-name basis, I admire so many of you. I know you're better than this. Each of you is... Each of you is better than this. Please, prove me right, please. That's all I've got. Thank you so much. Thank you for your service to Bucyrus. Let's kick it up a notch.
Mr. President.
Yes, Carolyn.
Can I answer, Mr. Graham?
Sure.
Mr. Graham, I will stand up and tell you, I will not be a part of it.
Any other public participation?
Hello, my name is Bridgette Luzod. I, my address is 13916 Felix Wolf Road, Riverview, Florida. I am, I'm a Navy veteran. I'm also a business owner. I'm a first responder. I'm also a mother, a taxpayer, a property owner. And most importantly, I'm a veteran, I'm a patriot of this country. With my medical practice, I service people all over the country. And I have patients that I fly to Columbus and come see here in Bucyrus. Bucyrus is beautiful to me, small, quaint. A decision I was going to make was, should I invest money and buy property in Bucyrus? So, being educated, being a veteran, being a patriot, I'm going to research and look into things that I want to know before making that financial decision. Upon doing this, I don't go onto social media platforms, I don't just use them, I really don't. But going and looking and researching, I stumbled upon the S show that everybody's referencing. And it's highly embarrassing just to our country in general. These are appointed, elected, or non-elected officials that are government-paid. And it's insulting for anybody, no matter what city, what town they're in, to act and conduct themselves the way that they're doing this. It insults and embarrasses me to even be a veteran and watch people that actually have authority positions to act this way. I wrote down a bunch of things. I'm never nervous to speak in public. I speak in front of 25,000, 35,000 people at medical conferences all the time. And I wrote down some notes. It seems like a lot of people are on the same page here. But the division, everybody's watched this country. I don't care if you're Democratic or Republican, but the division that's taken place for way too long has got to stop. This is absolutely asinine what's taking place here. And if anybody portrays that they are truly here for the better of Bucyrus, actions will speak louder than words. I've stumbled upon the hate groups on social media. And I'm like, I don't care if somebody doesn't like the president, none of you know me, nobody behind you knows me, I care enough to do this. I'm here seeing a patient again, and it happened to be tonight when there's a city council meeting. I watched the last one on YouTube and couldn't believe what I was watching. So, I did make a couple of notes. I don't even know that it's necessary that I read these, but I'm going to, here are some of the few things that I wrote. Isn't a city council formed to unify, work together for the better good of the community that they are in? Number one, I would think that everybody sitting on this council should say yes. And if they don't, they should never be sitting in any of the seats behind this podium. Why isn't the policy procedure accountability for members who embarrass and disrespect other members or the council have repercussions for their actions? Everybody should have accountability. And that's what's wrong with the country. People can get away, lawlessness is not acceptable to me. There are council members that are sitting behind here today that I know that I've not purposely picking out anybody, that portray to do the better for Bucyrus, yet they don't even respect officers when they're pulled over. They disrespect appointed judges. They drive a bus. They say disgusting things in public. I would never allow a child of mine to be near this person whatsoever. They are supposed to teach our youth to be leaders and representatives for our future. At this rate, it's going to go nowhere. Every single person, I don't care how much you're paid, you made the choice and decision to sit here. And either you're going to do your job, your position, or you're not. And out of respect for everybody, you should step down if you can't do that. Because if you care about Bucyrus, you're taking your time and energy to be here, then put your actions behind what you're saying. I have so many notes, I'm not even saying anything I actually wrote, because I can just speak freely. Everybody, you know, government-appointed officials, any party government, they work for me because I'm a taxpayer. You are, you are employed by me technically. If you get $1 of a taxpayer's dollar, you are my employee. You do answer to me. I'm here, I'm allowed to buy property in Bucyrus if I choose to. But just like the last guy that came up here in the city, he's like, people can go somewhere else. Who's to say I don't want to build a small medical practice here? Who's to say that? But not like this. This is not a community, this is division. So, anybody that sits behind here, that chooses to make their decisions based off their personal problem with another person is not qualified to be here. And that's, I'm just telling you, if I care enough and I don't live here, I have no investment on being here right now. But everybody needs to stop, this is so amateur adolescent juvenile, the way people are acting. Everybody's got a certain position here. You need to do your job and stop focusing on things that don't matter. Because what matters is the growth and progress of Bucyrus. I looked into this stuff on the, you know, the fire station. I don't know what the problem is. I'm like, I just listened to the last meeting, I'm like, I have no idea why it'd be a problem for a building to be appointed when people that work in those positions that are civil servants of firefighters, EMTs, if the building's there, they need more space, give it to them. I don't understand what the problem is. And now, what I never heard one time is, I heard everybody opposing that situation, but I didn't have, I did not have, I did not hear one person come up with another suggestion to fix a problem.
However, I would ask if the council would want to allow her more time because she traveled all the way from Florida to address the council.
I think I got my point across, but everybody, just make decisions based off what needs to be done for the community, not your personal issue.
I want to thank you.
You're welcome. I hope everybody does what they need to do.
Any more public participation?
Max Miller, 135 East Kilborn Drive. I would ask you why, but I don't think you would answer. But I do think, I just want for the record it to be put in, I think it's kind of weird that you're yelling at people to not speak from the audience, but then you're waiting for them to get back to their seat to speak to them instead of having an open dialogue with citizens. So, that's just what I would like to have in the record, so.
More public participation?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure how much time I have left. Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Route 4. The last thing I'm going to say about the fire station, it was never about the property itself for me. It was about how, you know, we have to base ourselves on laws and foundations and how we do things. And if you're not following proper procedure, that's the problem. We don't have a foundation. That's why I'm so invested in the rules and procedures and how councils are conducted because there's not a uniform, it's not enforced uniformly. However, that's not the problem. You have a long-term problem for both police and fire. And I am passionate about it. And I don't think that setting an ad hoc for one singular issue is going to solve the problems that both police and fire have. And so, I'm urging you to draft legislation, to file for a commission if you're going to do anything. Because that'll solve not only the firehouse problem, but it'll show that you're willing to work together and come up with a solution and not just, it be your way or the highway. So, long story short, let's work together instead of whatever this is, because no one comes out clean in the end. Thank you.
Any more public participation? You might as well, because Mrs. Slater came up twice, so you should have the entitlement.
I keep hearing hate group by people, certain people. Here's what a hate group is. An organization whose goals and activities are primarily or substantially based on a shared apathy towards people of one or more other different races, religious, ethnicities, nationalities, national origins, genders, and/or sexual identities. I don't believe the people that are referring to Facebook hate groups actually know what a hate group is.
Well, the group that Mr. Miller is referring to, there is four people sitting up here behind the railing that's in that group. Some of them have spouses in that, and I'm calling on all of them to remove themselves from that group tonight. Stand up, like the one person said, take the first step, get out of the group. Is there any more public participation? Whoa, 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 okay. Vicki. How do we know that Mr. Miller's time was up? Nobody was keeping track of the time.
That is your job. You're the one running it.
She's not going to let you talk again.
Not me, her.
Mrs. DeShawn over here, she says that you went over the five minutes, and technically there is a five-minute rule. And she's not going to allow me to give any more discretion.
Is there a platform that I can email you guys on purpose? Perfect, I'll do that. Thank you.
Any more public participation?
Robin Michael, formerly 3330 Andrews Road, Bucyrus. First off, I want to say that I've seen improvement in city council. And I'm proud of each and every one of you. I've had a chance to even speak to a couple of you. A couple more I'm still going to speak with. But you're on the right track. And regardless of what's happening out here on social media, ignore it. Ignore it. It has nothing to do with you. What happens in council, you're a very diversified group. Very different, each person. You don't have to like each other. You got a job to do right here. That's what matters. And I hope you all continue to do the jobs that you're doing. And I just want to say, thank you for sticking it out. Don't give up. Get a job done. Thank you.
Any more public participation?
Wanda Sherrick, 1485 Oak Ridge Drive, Bucyrus, Ohio. I just want to say, go vote.
Any more public participation? Seeing none, moving on to communications and petitions. And we have a representative from the Crawford Partnership here, Mrs. Sarah Hurley. Hurley, I'm sorry.
If you could help me for just a moment, I'm going to see if I can click the mouse from here to advance the PowerPoint. I will. Yeah. Oh, I'm just going to have to, I, cool, I can do that. I got it. Thank you. Thank you all for having me here tonight. I appreciate your time, engagement, and support of the Crawford Partnership. I am pleased to be here with our quarterly update reflecting back on quarter three. I will try to be brief, but there's a lot to share tonight, and I want to make sure I communicate that with you all. I'm going to break my presentation into kind of two buckets this evening. A little bit about what, who we are, what our strategies are, and then the metrics and how we measure those to make sure we're making progress. So, I wanted to start with a little bit about what an economic development office can do and what our purpose is. We're here to engage, influence, and support the growth in the community. We do that by improving the quality of life with our local industries, bringing in new investment, and making the area a better place to work and live. And we have four primary pillars that we do that with: economic, community, workforce, and leadership development. Available on our website, as well as provided to you this evening, is our one-pager of our overall decade-long vision plan. But tonight, I'm going to share a little bit more specific, what we're tackling. I wanted to share that we do have a board of directors, over 20 members on our board from a diverse background and representation across the county. They help guide and steer our efforts. Our top industries are covered with our board members and their expertise. So, I just wanted to share a little bit about our board of directors. Also, at any time, please let me know of any questions. All right, so our first overarching area of development is economic development. And I wanted to share some of the strategies that you'll see on our 2030 vision and some everyday examples of what that looks like in our office. So, we want to strengthen existing businesses. One example, and please note, the things I'm sharing are not everything, it's just to highlight what our day-to-day work looks like. We have been awarded two small business grants from Jobs Ohio in 2023 and 2024, bringing in $100,000 to two of our smaller businesses. Job creation is tied to those grants. So, between those two grants, six new jobs will be created in Bucyrus over three years. We also work to attract businesses. And to date, I have reviewed 54 leads from Jobs Ohio and other sources. Of those, I was able to submit 17 times. Eight are still active. And I'm excited to report that in September, I submitted a request for information. And based on their timeline, they reached out October 1st for a virtual site visit. And we were, it was going to be, so I received that Tuesday. The visit was to happen Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. I did not know which day we would get. Luckily, we got Thursday and had some time to prepare, bringing in our utility partners, the city of Bucyrus utility providers. And we put on an excellent presentation. I'm waiting to hear how we did, if we'll make it to the next round of consideration. But that project would be a $30 million investment and create 50 jobs. So, we are actively pursuing a lead, and we have had a visit. And so, stay tuned, hopefully more good news to follow, or at least that we've made it to the next round of the attraction. You can also see that we have the top sites submitted to these leads: Crossroads Industrial Park, the former GE Building, the Galleon Spec Building, Marmen Keystone, and Stetzer Industrial Park. So, I get these leads in, I look at the acreage or building they need, the utilities they need. If we have a fit in the county, I submit. If we have a close fit and I think I can argue it, I submit. So, that's a little update there. We work to enhance government services, and a great example of that would be a community reinvestment area. If we have a business looking to expand or come, Bucyrus has this program in place. And I work with the city as well as the schools and the business to bring that forward. So, that is a great example of how we work to enhance the government services here. Our second area of development is workforce development. We have some things within that, like talent attraction and retention, and improving our education and training options. So, I wanted to highlight a couple of programs that we have. Teacher boot camp and Wage Tours. Wage Tours have been around for quite a while. It stands for Workforce Awareness for Graduates and Educators. It was kind of put on hold due to COVID, like many programs. So, that is being reactivated this year, happening on October 24th. And Bucyrus students are participating. So, what this means is they're going to get out into our businesses and some of our top industries, agriculture, healthcare, and manufacturing. They're going to learn what jobs are there. HR, accounting, marketing, all the different things that make a company what it is. And they're going to learn that they can have a successful career here in the county. And their teachers are going to be alongside them. And if there's anything they can enhance in the classroom, they will have that opportunity as well. As we've shared earlier, we launched U-Science this year. All six school districts are participating. This is funded by Pioneer. And it's a platform where students take aptitude tests to help with their, discover their natural strengths and interests, and then hopefully find a career that aligns for them. So, our organization is actively working to get our businesses on that platform. So, after those students take those aptitude tests, they can maybe find a career path here in Bucyrus and here in the county. We also work very closely with Pioneer and other folks throughout the county on different training programs. Again, I'm not singling anyone out, just using an example. And Lisa on our team is our dedicated workforce manager. So, she is meeting or attending visits with companies, and they're saying, "We need to upskill in this." Great, we have a program we can match you to. And so, we are working very hard to make sure our companies are aware of the resources and then walk beside them if we need to, to get that done. For the first time, and in quarter three, we launched our State of the Workforce Survey. We were targeting data and wanted to understand from the employees' perspective what the state of the local workforce is. We talked about and asked them questions, what's a challenge, what are your recent and projected growth, what about your job creation, and your opinion and use of the training programs. There were 49 responses, which represented over 5,000 employees here in the county, or more than 25% of our employees. So, some of the key findings circle around recruitment, retention, investment, job creation, and the various programs they may be using or not aware of. That full report is available on our website, but this will certainly guide our efforts through the end of this year and well into next year, making sure those businesses are engaged with a variety of programs that we can bring to them. Our third area of development is community development. And I wanted to share a few programs that we support and projects. So, this year, our office supported a handful of projects for the state capital budget as well as the one-time strategic fund. Some of the Bucyrus projects that received funding were the Maple Crest Community Center for $500,000. The Bucyrus All Miller Recreational Trail with $432,000. I apologize if you're looking at your slide, I had a typo and caught it. I fixed it on mine. And then the Bicentennial Park received an extension on their funds of $175,000, as well as some additional funds in the amount of $200,000. So, our office is working to support that quality of life and making this a better place to work and live. We also announced this year that we received a $1.5 million Brownfield EPA grant. Bucyrus is included in this grant. The grant covers all of Crawford County except for Galleon. Galleon has their own fund. The grant covers all of Crawford County except for Galleon. Galleon has their own funds. And this will be used for Phase 1 and Phase 2 assessments of brownfield sites, so maybe where a factory is no longer, or something like that. And also, within this grant, we can develop some cleanup plans and revitalization plans. This is a four-year grant, and we are at the very beginning. And our new community development manager, Ashley Shaw, and myself are working to get all the paperwork in order with the EPA, so we can start to utilize those funds. So way more to come, four years, you'll hear about it. Well, and that popped up, there we go. All right, leadership development. So the partnership has a program. It's an experiential leadership program. We cover the entire county. The goal is to build a passionate network of local leaders. They understand, they experience the county, maybe they grew up in one community but never really explored another. So we cover the entire county. We are currently on our 13th cohort. It's the largest to date at 24 participants, and 13 of those folks in the program work or live in Bucyrus. The program covers a variety of topics: health and social services, tourism, agriculture, business and industry. And we make a point to cover the whole county throughout this program. And to date, 12-plus businesses or organizations that are in Bucyrus or serve Bucyrus have been part of our program to present or host our group. So that's a little bit about our strategies and our mission and who we are. So I want to tell you guys a little bit more, an update on how we measure our success. In the last two years, we have developed our key performance indicators. We're looking at tax revenue, job creation, investment, our national ranking, and as well as the partnership's stakeholder ratings. So to date, and we also, I should note, break down our goals into good, better, best. So when you see GBB, good, better, best. To date, we are at $1.3 million of estimated tax revenue. There are a lot of factors that go into it, but from these investments and job creation, we have a sophisticated calculator that can help generate an estimate of what the income tax will be, what the sales tax will be. And we are currently following right between that better and best. 55 jobs created to date, so hovering right between good and better. And I can tell you that nearly 50% of those jobs are here in Bucyrus. The way the partnership supports that job creation is through press releases. An example, we had a company who completed an expansion and knew they were going to hire for the jobs they created. They asked us to get that press release out to use it as a tool to recruit for those open positions. Heard some great feedback from that. We partner with the Chambers of Commerce when there's a smaller business to help spread the good word that people are investing and growing here. A couple of these jobs that were created, or a handful of them rather, were from grants that were provided that had job creation requirements attached to them. Some of them are from property searches. I've had people come up and say, hey, I need a location, can you help me find one? I have a database. I can match them up and then connect them to the landlord or real estate people. And then ultimately, if they choose a location, there's a new job in town. Investment, we are sitting at $24 million, so hovering right between good and better. And then ultimately, a couple of them are done for the year. We did rank, which you've heard since quarter one, in the top 3% nationally. And if anybody has any questions on how that works, I'd be happy to answer that. And in September, we held our annual, annual member survey. It's in its third year there, and that's where we ask them to rate things that our organization works on in level of importance, how we're doing in each of our buckets of development. And I'm pleased to report that we continue to trend upward. Our goal is to be over 4 on a scale of 1 to 5, 5 being the best, and we were at 4.3. So trending in the right direction there. This year, our scope of work included two wildly important goals. Some of this overlaps with what I shared earlier, and it'll overlap with what I'm about to share, so I'll be breezy, but please let me know of any questions. We wanted to define workforce development. Lisa is out having conversations with these businesses to understand their needs. To date, she has had 67 conversations, connecting them with a variety of programs. We never try to, we always want to add value in a meeting. From small to big, we want to make sure we add value if that business takes time to meet with us. We also launched the State of the Workforce Survey, which we just talked about. We are using Salesforce to track all of our information and active projects. We're working to define plans and collaborate with partners. So a few examples are Workforce Area 10, the Business Advisory Councils, the Education Service Centers, and Pioneer. All of those have their own educational plans. How can we support them or look for any gaps that maybe the partnership can support? And we've already talked about teacher boot camp and wage tours. So we wanted to work on the programs that we were going to utilize for this part of our organization. The second was to build out community development. So we are working on different ways to raise funds to support our positions. So the EPA grant and some of the other grants that we've recently won come with administrative fees. That gives us one bucket of funds that we can pull from. We continue to work on programs like the Community Development Block Grant, the Brownfield Grant I mentioned, and some other programs throughout the county. I am pleased to report that we launched our search and recruited in third quarter our new community development manager. So she joined on September 3rd. Then we have our focused plan of action, which kind of overlaps with our goals. But how do we know we're doing a good job meeting with our businesses and strengthening them? We compare ourselves against the 17 counties in Northwest Ohio. 14 of those 17 counties are non-metro like us, meaning we don't have a Toledo or a major city like that. We are number one amongst the non-metro counties, and we are currently number two out of all 17 counties. We all input our data into a system, and we get our updates to know how we rank amongst those. We launched this year two programs: the Crawford Business Exchange, which is for businesses that are for sale. So far this year, we've worked with four companies. Two have gone out, one is in the works, it's a Bucyrus company. Generally, these companies are for sale because they are looking to retire or something like that. But we want to keep that job, that business, jobs, whatever, in our community in Bucyrus. We also launched Innovate Crawford, which is programming for entrepreneurship to help support those who are looking to start a new business. We know we need to continue with our real estate development. We need to attract companies here, and we need to have space available for our current companies who are looking to expand. We had Insight Consulting here in July for a large site visit. This was funded by Jobs Ohio, who has contracted with them for several years. They evaluated sites in our county and in Bucyrus, and came and did a full visit and spent the day here in Bucyrus. While our sites do need work, our community rallied, and we put on a wonderful visit for our guests. We continue with our aggressive content-based marketing. We use press releases either authored by us or shared by us to help generate stories in the media, both internally, regionally, and at the state level. Our goal is to have 100 stories generated each year. We are currently at 123, so very excited to see where we'll end the year. And I can tell you that it's making it to the regional and state. I've had feedback where people are like, yeah, my vendor down in Southwest Ohio saw the press release, and so I know we're getting out. All right, closing in here on our, our plan of action. And we've already touched on a few of these, so we're working on those workforce development programs and tracking our metrics there in Salesforce. We've secured Ashley in our community development role, and we're continuing to manage the programs that we have started within community development. Any questions at this point? I'm going to kind of wrap it up here. All right, so I wanted to kind of end with just a few more examples of the impact that we're making. Countywide, we have those programs: the Business Exchange, Innovate Crawford, top 3%. We continue to support the Drug Free Youth Rally, which is all six school districts. We have our leadership program. And then a couple more examples of partnering with the Chamber for Ribbon Cutting to celebrate Edward Jones' new location. We launched the Recover Crawford Business Loan after the tornado in April. And two businesses were approved to get that loan to help rebuild after that unfortunate event. We had Advanced Fiber Technology announce a $5.5 million expansion earlier this year that created six jobs and maintained all of their current positions. And then the three projects that received money from the state capital budget. We achieve all of this by working with a network of partners. From the state to the local to the regional, whoever has the program that can help our businesses or our community will work with them to bring that availability here. And as you know, David Zach left our team in August, at the end of August. And Ashley joined, and I moved into the interim executive director role. So I just wanted to touch base and see if there were any questions or concerns about the transition. This is our first chance that we've had to talk since that happened.
I don't have a question, but I will commend you for all of your work during the transition. I know it probably has not been easy, but from, from my talks with you and from what you've shared, you guys are doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
Especially in transition, so.
Thank you very much. All right, and I know I shared a lot tonight, and I'm sorry, but I'm trying to make, kind of present a whole picture here of the Crawford Partnership. Are there any other questions that I can answer or bring back to you guys? Thank you for your time. I know I talked a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The council clerk told me there's no letter that was submitted for that presentation, so there won't be a vote on accepting and filing a letter. Moving on, standing committee reports, plating committee.
I thought, though, because we have required them to give us a quarterly update, can we maybe have a vote to accept this presentation as a quarterly update?
Very good point, Mr. Myers.
That is right.
I will entertain a motion to accept this as a quarterly report from the Crawford Partnership.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now we're going to move on, plating committee, Mr. Me.
Uh, we had, uh, we had initially 1189.03 brought it up to this first meeting. But I take full responsibility, I have some things out, which is general business, GI, industrial general. We'd like to add those back in, add something in there, either that or a different piece of legislation. I have to make a motion to take it back to plating temporarily, so we figure that out.
You want to make a motion to send 35-2024 back to plating committee?
Yes.
Need a second?
Second.
Mr. Me made the motion, Mr. Myers seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's going back to plating. Is there anything else, Mr. Me? Anybody have any questions for Mr. Me? Moving on, public lands and buildings, Chairwoman, Ms. Sherrick.
Mr. Goldberg, I have a question.
All right.
The bit of legislation that we were supposed to be on the third reading for, that needs to have some corrections, due to the fact that those were not corrections that were created by the, by the committee, was that something that could be done by waiving the rules and doing through council itself?
Uh, so as long as it's not structural and doesn't change the meaning or structure of the motion or of the legislation, you can move to amend it. But what, what changes are you talking about?
We had needed to change it from a majority to two-thirds.
That is, that is structural, that will have to go back to committee.
That's all.
Any questions for public lands and buildings chair? Mrs. DeShawn?
Ms. Sherrick, I think also, our proposed resolution 230-2024, which is the selling of lots by Wendy's, identified as Lot Number 1, and proposed resolution number 231-2024, selling of lots by Wendy's, identified as Lot Number 2, those, I think your committee will need to refer those back to committee because of the structural changes that need to be made.
All three need to be referred back to committee.
Yeah.
Do we want to do that now?
You're giving your report now, correct?
Yep.
Did you want to make a motion, Mrs. DeShawn, to send 230-2024, 231-2024, and 229-2024 back to the Public Lands and Buildings Committee?
Well, since those are on public, or in public lands and building, I'm not a member of that committee, which I'm being told that doesn't make a difference. I'm just wondering, though, if maybe the committee chair would want to make that motion?
Just making sure I'm allowed to speak. All right, I'd like to make a motion to refer 229, proposed resolution 229-2024, proposed resolution 230-2024, and proposed resolution 231-2024 back to committee.
I'll second that.
Mrs. Sherrick made the motion, Mr. Hickman seconded to send resolution 229-2024, 230-2024, and 231-2024 back to Public Lands and Buildings Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those three pieces are going back to Public Lands and Buildings Committee. Any other questions for Public Lands and Buildings? Moving on then, Health and Safety Chair, Mrs. DeShawn.
No report.
Does anybody have any questions for Health and Safety Chair? Seeing none, Finance Committee Chair, Mr. Myers?
Nothing to report.
Does anybody have any questions for Finance Committee Chair? Seeing none, Economic Development Chair, Mr. Hickman?
At the Tourism Advisory Council
Microphone, Mr. Hickman, please, sorry. Can you turn the microphone on?
It wasn't on. At the Tourism Advisory Council meeting for October 8th, 2024, we had discussed further updates on the integrated marketing campaign, as well as future planning for the landing page. We had had a brain, a brainstorming session on tourism-related projects. Ashland's outdoor feature, The Pumpkin People, was in very hot discussion during that session. The upcoming shopping and/or holiday events calendar has been updated, and I will read as follows. The Spirits Scavenger Hunt will be October 25th through, through November 2nd. Pickwick's Deck the Stalls will be November 1st and the 2nd, and the 8th and the 9th. Crossroads Open House will be November 6th through the 9th. Bucyrus Historical Society Open House will be December 1st. Old Fashioned Christmas at the Harvey One Room Schoolhouse will be December 1st. The BACC Candlelight Christmas will be December 5th. And Christmas at Pickwick will be December 7th. And as of that, that is all I had to report.
Thank you for that report, Mr. Hickman. Is there any questions for Mr. Hickman's report? Moving on, Service Committee, Mr. Moritz.
Title IX is still in the works, being sent back to administration for notary of deapal to see if we want to change anything else in it. Also worked with the interim law director to see if he could see anything else we might want to look forward to changing into it. I also went through the rest of Title IX myself to see if we needed to change anything. I only see one thing entering in my suggestions for that. Other than that, hopefully, maybe less progress, up to show Thursday, maybe.
Do you have the current copy of the draft Title IX in your possession?
I do it on.
An email? Is it an email format? Or is it hard copy?
I have hard copy.
Any questions for Service Committee Chair? Moving on, Special Ad-Hoc Committee Chair that Mrs. DeShawn is chairing regarding the council rules?
I have no report.
Does anybody have any questions for Special Ad-Hoc Committee Chair? Uh, any anticipation on the next meeting?
I believe it would be well for us to wait and see what happens at the October 24th Republican Central Committee, where I believe they will be selecting, hopefully will be selecting, a new law director. And I feel for us to have a meeting before that time. We should not have a meeting before that time.
Okay, any other questions for the Ad-Hoc Committee Chair? Seeing none, Special Ad-Hoc Committee Chair that Mr. Me is the chairman of regarding
IMPC.
IMPC, International Property Maintenance.
No report.
Any questions for Mr. Me? Seeing none, Traffic Commission reports since Mayor Truk Seeing none, traffic commission reports, since Mayor Truk is not here, Mr. Starner, do you have any report on traffic commission?
No, sir, no report.
Any questions for traffic commission? Seeing none. We need a motion to accept the committee reports collectively.
So moved.
I'll second.
Mr. Hickman made the motion, Mr. Moritz seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Report of city officers, we did not have a report submitted by the mayor. We're going to move on to the service director's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I would like to bring up that the Republican Central Committee will meet on October 24th, 2024, for the law director interviews and selection process, as Mrs. DeShawn said, so. The administration received notice from an engineer at Crawford and Murphy and Tilly that the city may be eligible to receive grant funding for the airport runway lighting project from the Airport Improvement Program Grant of 2025. I'd like to refer the 2025 Airport Improvement Grant to Public Lands and Buildings Committee as an emergency for their consideration to allow me to apply for this grant. Leaf pickup will commence on November 1st, 2024. Please place your leaves in the tree lawns for collection by the city crews. Pickup will start on the south end of the town and move north until all leaves are collected. If you prefer to dispose of your leaves earlier, you can bring them to the city compost pile at no cost, or bag them for trash pickup for a fee of $1 per bag. The administration had the privilege of assisting Mr. Rayla Thidoff and the Bucyrus Trails Committee in planting two apple trees donated by the family farm and home last Saturday, October 12th, 2024. At the Bucyrus Trail Committee meets at the Marshia for this event. The administration would like to remind everybody that spectacular is this Saturday, October 19th, 2024, from 3:00 to 6:00 at the Crawford County Fairgrounds. We hope to see everyone there. The Trillium Trunkert Tree will be held Saturday, October 26th, from 1:00 to 2:00, and the City of Bucyrus Trickertree will be held October 27th, from 2:00 to 4:00. Thank you.
Need a motion to refer the 2025 Airport Improvement Grant to Public Lands and Buildings?
I'll make a motion for the airport grant to Public Lands and Buildings.
Mrs. Sherrick made the motion, Mr. Myers seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Excuse me? As an emergency? Please?
Oh, that's when it's there.
Okay, never mind, sorry.
You're good.
Anybody have any questions for the service director?
I have a question.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Sherrick.
The leaf pickup, you're stating that you're going to start on the south end and go to the north end?
Yes.
So they were not able to do it coinciding with, like, trash pickup?
They said they've tried that before, and it just doesn't work out, so they're going to do just a big rotation.
Okay.
Any other questions for service director, Mr. Myers?
I did also notice that they were actually picking up leaves on Southern Avenue yesterday. Are they going to do that every day between now and November 1st, or is that just-
We're working on our machines, so they're testing them out, and since someone had them out, it was a good time to-
Good enough.
Yep.
Any other questions for service director? Seeing none, moving on to the law director's report, Mr. Gobrick?
You have my report, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Gobrick? Seeing none, moving on to the auditor's report, Ms. Lewis?
If you recall, I was unable to give an update at the meeting on October 1st due to still processing month ends the time that the report was due, so today we'd like to provide an update. Our gross income tax revenues are up 14% in total between September 2023 to September 2024, or $87,347.21. This is primarily due to our income tax employees working so diligently to assess the back taxes. And I did want to say for Kelly Schimpf that we had actually brought in from the Attorney General, $203,179.43 this year. The $87,000 is because it's split between three funds, depending what year those taxes were due determines the percentage in which fund that money goes into. Still, this is a finite amount of money, but it is helping us greatly for now. The additional 0.25% safety forces levy has brought in $689,107.19 in 2024, which is wonderful, but keep in mind the previous council had to transfer nearly all that was remaining out of our ARPA funds, which was $424,898.25 just to balance, and the city's carryover at the end of the year in the general fund was $615,980.56, which should be closer to 1.2 million. The carryover in the safety forces fund at the beginning of 2024 was $584,215.53, which at first glance appears very good, but when taking into account the raises that were negotiated at the end of 2023, the projected carryover of that fund at the beginning of 2024 was to be around $266,873.81, though if you look at the current detailed trial balance, it will look odd because of the transfer of all of the safety forces from the general fund to Fund 202. And we will have eaten into a lot of that carryover in order to make salaries in 2024. If we estimate that we will bring in another $200,000 for the next three months, so $600,000 total, which is a little higher than I would like to estimate, we would have $1,289,107.19. Then we have to subtract out what we used from the ARPA funds the previous year, that $424,898.25, then subtract out how much we have eaten into that carryover in Fund 202 due to raises, $317,341.72, that leaves us with $546,867.22. But once we take into account the deficit and carryover from the general fund of the roughly $600,000 we've carried over the last two years, we would just then be back at 2021 levels. And that does not include the purchase of new equipment for our safety forces at all. So it is imperative that the city bring in a new stream of revenue for the purchase of equipment. On that note, early voting has started, and I would implore citizens to do your civic duty and get out and vote however you see fit. Also, our auditors at Clark, Schaefer, and Hackett have completed our 2023 audit, and it has been submitted to the Federal Audit Clearing House. I am having council clerk, the council clerk, attach all documents to your packets online due to that one file alone being 274 pages. If you have any questions, feel free to stop by my office, or if you give me a heads up, I would be happy to address them at the next council meeting. I would like to refer to Finance Committee as an emergency, the approval of the tax budget for 2025, and to Finance Committee as an emergency appropriations for Park and Rec Electric. Thank you.
Need a motion for the referral of the tax budget for 2025 to Finance Committee, and appropriations for Park and Rec Electric to Finance Committee?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Does anybody have any questions for the auditor? Thank you for that report, Ms. Lewis. I really appreciate you breaking down what you did there to show that we're still not out of the woods yet financially, and this levy that council has put on the ballot is it's very needed. Any other questions for the auditor? Seeing none. Oh, Mr. Moritz?
Is that the swimming pool fund, is that going to be also the pup included in that, or is that just materials and supplies and that kind of stuff like that?
So, are you talking about the property tax levy specifically?
Yeah.
No, the pool would not be included in that, that goes just to safety forces equipment, but I will say the safety forces fund and the general fund are, you can think of them as combined, we infuse a lot of what goes to pay the safety forces fund with general fund money. So any stress you can take off of the general fund, that's where the pool comes from. So, in a roundabout way, it would help, but the property tax money will not go directly in any way to the pool, it would go strictly to the safety force equipment.
Any other questions for the auditor?
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have a treasurer's report dated September 2024, need a motion to accept and file that.
So moved.
Sir?
Ms. Sherrick made the motion, Mr. Hickman seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We also have a fire chief report dating September 2024, fire and EMS report, need a motion to accept and file that.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Sherrick made the motion, Mr. Moritz seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Then we need a motion to accept all city officers' reports collectively.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Me.
Mr. Hickman made the motion, Mr. Me seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Visitors input regarding reports of standing and special committees and city officers.
Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Rock 4, this is in regard to the ad hoc for the rules and procedure that is with Vicki. I am asking that, since this is an official part of the council, that I want it to be known that on Tuesday, October 1st, after the council meeting where the reconsideration failed, I was approached by, and this is related to that, so bear with me, I was approached by Mr. Fankhauser, actually Vicki and I both were approached by Mr. Fankhauser, and was very disrespectful in front of the chief of, the fire chief, and at what time he essentially told us that the ends justify the means and that the process doesn't matter. I found that incorrigible as well, that you state such things about your own committee. If you have suggestions on what the council, that she would be doing, please be an active participant, and please don't result to personal attacks against your own members. And there was no apology made, at least that I saw, for that, and that's when Thursday, you extended an olive branch, I believe that's how you sent me a picture of an olive branch on Facebook, stating that you would like me to be on this committee. Policies and procedures matter, so let's just stop pointing fingers and being rude and yelling in people's faces in front of an audience. You can't do that one day, turn around and have an olive branch the next, and then turn around and send an additional email again with the same accusations against this ad hoc. They do have a job to do, it is important, it is a foundation of how this council operates. So either support the committee and show up and give your suggestions respectfully, or please be quiet and allow her to do her work. Thank you.
Well, I have to respond to this. Mrs. Slater has said that I have said certain things. What? Here's what I told Mrs. DeShawn and Mrs. Slater after the October 1st meeting. I told them, and this is after the last ad hoc rules meeting, which what I'm being told went nowhere, it was three hours, I told them, 50 years from now, it's not going to matter what the rules were, what's going to matter is how many jobs did we get in Bucyrus? How many new housing units did we get in Bucyrus? Because when you fast forward 50 years and look back, nobody's going to care that we had the best rules in the state of Ohio 50 years from now. I stand by that.
Mr. President?
Mrs. DeShawn?
Since you responded, I'm going to respond as well. First off, you did not say you yelled at both Mrs. Slater and I. Your comments were that of three. Number one, I'm taking the city down. Number two, I'm training Clarissa to be like me. And three, am I going to sue the city again? Now, I would like to read, if I may, the text that you sent to me, and bear with me This was a text sent on Saturday, October 5th, after the October 1st council meeting. Vicki, I appreciate what you said Thursday night at the podium, when Aaron was trying to shut me down from speaking. You didn't have to do that, and you did. That shows that you put what's right above personal issues. I'm sorry I made the comment I did to you Tuesday night after the meeting. Now, I smiled at that because it wasn't one comment, it was three comments, and I wasn't going to bring this up, but hey, why not? Then you turn around, after, first off, you scream and yell, then you apologize, then you send me an email, which all council has received. I'm not sure if I want to read all this email.
Well, I hope that you do.
I don't know if I want to take the public's time, but it's a very interesting email. Okay, dear Mrs. DeShawn, I am writing you an email now, since you said you don't want me to send you any more texts. Continuing the discussing, and I'm reading this just as it's typed, continuing the discussing, though, that I was having with you over text regarding resolution 229-2024, and its need to get sent back to committee to get amended, I have some thoughts that need pointed out. Bear with me here, I want to try something. I want to get to the drafts part.
You're not going to read it in its entirety?
Oh, yes, I am, yes. But I'm getting to, I prepared my reply to you, so I've got that in my draft, so as I'm reading what you said to me, I'm going to read my responses. I'll start over. Dear Mrs. DeShawn, I am writing you an email now, since you said you don't want me to send you any more texts. Continuing the discussing, though, that I was having with you over text regarding resolution 229-2024, and its need to get sent back to committee to get amended, I have some thoughts that need pointed out. After talking to Law Director Gobrick, and inbred, I did correct you on the spelling of his last name. We all know that I do that quite often, correct spelling. That's tongue-in-cheek.
It's all right.
No, I mean, we should learn how to spell your last name. After talking to Law Director Gobrick yesterday afternoon, I found out that you had a conversation Monday in which he is saying that you and him are agreeing now that, yes, it does indeed need to go back to committee to get amended. That has to do with the 229-2024 being the north end fire station. My biggest question to that is why would it have been so hard for you yesterday morning to inform me of that instead of your text saying, yes, you will have to wait and see? Vicki, this is absolutely ridiculous that you- Vicki, this is absolutely ridiculous that you cannot be upfront with me regarding the status of that legislation when you obviously knew at the time, because of your conversation with Brandon the day before, that it was indeed getting sent back. This is my response to you, Mr. Fankhauser. During my conversation with interim Law Director Gobrick on Monday, October 7th, 24, after having previously read ORC Section 721.03, provided by you through email dated October 6, 24, I did concur with Attorney Gobrick that Resolution Number 229-2024 should be returned back to committee for further discussion and amendment. However, it is my understanding that a motion to refer the legislation back to committee would have to come from the committee, which I just found out tonight is not true. But at that time, this was the understanding I had, that it would have to be the committee that would have to request it to go back. And since I am not a member of that committee, I did not know if the committee would or would not refer the resolution back to committee, and is why I stated, yes, you will have to wait and see. Why are you doing, this is Mr. Fankhauser, why are you doing this? Why are you being difficult to work with? My response, I did not realize that I was being difficult to work with. At the September 24, 24 ad hoc committee meeting, you stated, Vicki, I commend you for running this ad hoc committee. In your August 26, 24 email regarding old YMC timeline, you stated, I trust that you would be able to put everything together in a nice timeline. In your April 18, 24 email to me, you stated, very good on your research tonight regarding the Bratwurst Festival. I am proud to have you on council. And in a Facebook post forwarded it to me, you stated, I hope she runs for council. We need Vicki on there. She is the only one that knows what the hell is supposed to be done. Mr. Fankhauser, I have made every attempt to work with council on this to get this resolved. This meaning 229-2024 North End Fire Station. I brought it up at the October 1st regular meeting that it needed sent back to committee, and it fell on deaf ears with no vote from council to refer it back. This is my response. At the October 1st, 24 council meeting, you stated, the 229 property sale, I just became aware here in the last hourish that the section, it says, a majority of all members elected there too. So I, I, there's something in the Ohio revised code, I believe, that this disposition of property requires more than a majority vote. So I'd like to send that back to committee to, oh, now excuse me. Yeah, yeah. So I'd like to send that back to committee. Something in the Ohio revised code, I believe, that this disposition of property requires more than a majority vote. So I'd like to send that back to committee to make sure that we're actually doing this property sale properly. Subsequent to that meeting, you sent an email on August, on October 6, 24, to Gobrick, myself, and see Aaron Sherrick regarding Section 721.03, lease of sale of real estate advertisement for bids. Since you were aware of the situation prior to the October 1, 24 council meeting, why did you not discuss this with Attorney Gobrick before the meeting started? Also, had your presentation at the October 1, 24 council meeting been more informative as set forth in your October 6, 24 email, the committee may have been more receptive to what you were trying to say. However, your comments of one, just became aware in the last hourish, and two, there's something in the Ohio revised code that I believe requires more than just a majority vote, were inadequate, in my opinion. Mr. Fankhauser, now another two whole weeks is going to go by before it can get referred at the October 15th meeting. Then when I point out the rules in 111.11 about the proper process, you accuse me of overstepping my position as council president. My response, I made no such accusation. The conversation went like this, and I quote, Fankhauser. So the 111, Vicki, where it states the order of the business of the meeting, it says in there, this is the suggested order. So there's, there's really no, like, set in stone. The reason it says suggested is so that it can be tweaked and stuff. DeShawn, where does it state in here that it is suggested? Fankhauser, pulling the 111 up right now. Okay, the 111 order of business, 111.18, at all meetings of council and committees' business shall be transacted in a timely manner in the following suggested order. It's suggested. DeShawn, thank you. Mr. Fankhauser goes on to say, if it wasn't for me pointing this all out, you all would be in even more of a mess than you already are regarding this legislation. So I don't quite understand what that comment was for. And speaking of accusing me of not remembering what my position is as council president, that brings up something else I've been needing to point out to you. Since your position is a council member at large, the person that is overstepping their bounds is actually you. You seem to be trying to run the entire city behind the scenes yourself. What do I mean by this? Well, let me point out some of what I am talking about. Number one, when Gurnert was arrested and we were coming up to the August 20th meeting with no legislation having been prepared by any legal counsel, I was very concerned on August 19th about what was going to be on the agenda for the next day's meeting. I actually stopped in to see Miranda about this about noon on August 19th, which led me to calling yourself on my phone from Miranda's office. Then I found out that you actually knew more about what was going on with hiring of a potential law director that day than I did. So here I am, Monday afternoon, trying to figure out what is going to be on the agenda because I am working on a deadline to make sure it is published properly to documents on demand, and a council member at large knows more than me about if the city is going to have a potential law director hired that day. When were you planning on informing me of any of that as the deadline for the packet was quickly approaching? And why does an at-large council member know more about what is going on than the actual president of council? My response to you. During our conversation on August 19, 24, about the August 20, 24 council agenda, the following was discussed. 2024 OPWC, sale of parking lot behind Wendy's land, behind Wendy's, land between Clady's Wallpaper and Wendy's in North End Fire Station. During our conversation, I informed you that I had reviewed the draft legislation on above, on the above, which was prepared by the law director's legal assistant, and my suggested revisions to the OPWC were emailed to Miranda. I also questioned you on the filing deadline for the OPWC grant, which I said would determine if the legislation needed to be presented at the 8/20/24 council meeting, or if it could wait. I further stated to you on the 19th that I had concerns about the draft legislation prepared by the legal assistant on the sale of the Wendy's lots in the North End Fire Station. But I did not feel that I should offer any suggested revisions until a new interim law director was selected to review my suggested revisions. And therefore, you decided that the drafts prepared by the legal assistant would be held. Mr. Fankhauser goes on to say, the next day, August 20th, I tried to call you early in the day to talk to you about this, and you were heading into the Service Safety Director Mayor's Office for a meeting. You said, for a meeting, I said. I asked you what that was about, and you said you didn't feel like telling me. My correct statement to you was, I said I didn't feel it was my place to tell you about the meeting because it was not my meeting, but one that I had been invited to attend. Then you go on to say, but I said that I would call you back later, but I never did call you back. You go on to say, what exactly was that meeting about, Vicki? And why did you never call me back that day? Again, I respond, it was not my meeting, but one that I'd been invited to. Mr. Fankhauser goes on to say, then the following Friday, August 23rd, I'm heading up to City Hall late in the day, 3:00 to 4:00 p.m., and I see Service Safety Director Starner walking into council chambers. I go in there, and here is Brandon Gobrick getting ready for an interview with the Service Safety Director. Because of the absence with the mayor due to his surgery, I figured it was okay for me to sit in on the interview since I could have, since I could have to step in for Bruce at any time if something, God forbid, were to happen to him. Then to my disbelief, you walk into the room, obviously, to take part of the interview yourself, obviously, having been invited way in advance. I'm sorry, Vicki, but you have no business as a council at-large member to be in that interview for an interim law director. My response to you is this, I was not at the interview in my capacity as council at-large member. I was invited to the meeting because of my previous 38-plus years serving as the law director clerk for five previous law directors, and to answer any questions that may be asked by the individual being interviewed about the law director office and the functions and duties of those under the law director. Mr. Fankhauser goes on to say, why did I know nothing about it? I should know about these things before the individual council members do. And here, it looks like you are trying to run everything with the city behind the scenes yourself. So you want to bring up elected officials overstepping their job description. You are the most guilty of that before anyone else. Now I am finding out that you are also reviewing draft legislation between you and the law director's office, and reviewing draft minutes before the council members do, which they should be reviewing all draft legislation during committee meetings. My response to Mr. Fankhauser, as an elected official and one who is tasked with approving or disapproving proposed legislation, I began in January reviewing the proposed legislation provided by the council, provided in the council packets, and forwarded to Law Director Gurnert my suggested revisions to the legislation drafts, so as to eliminate the need to bring up any suggested changes at the council meeting, which could possibly cause legislation to be held and not addressed until the next council meeting. Again, as an elected official and one who is tasked with approving or disapproving council and committee minutes, I have been reviewing the minutes and offering my suggested revisions to the council clerk. So again, to eliminate the need to bring up any suggested changes at the council or committee meetings, which could cause the minutes to be held up for approval or disapproval. Mr. Fankhauser goes on to say, these committees need to be reviewing legislation and then voting on it to be advanced to full council rather than this jack-in-the-box stuff getting thrown into council's packets the day before the meetings, not knowing what with the draft legislation that you're going to get. What are you trying to do here? It appears you are trying to be the council president, mayor, and law director, all from your at-large seat on city council. And this is nothing new. It's been going on for years. Just read these articles on the Crawford County now, and it's quite apparent you are trying to injector yourself into everything with the city. You go on, Mr. Fankhauser goes on to say, why am I bringing this all up? Because in the grand picture of the city, all this is doing is distracting from getting jobs and housing in Bucyrs right now. 50 years from now, Vicki, nobody is going to care what the darn rules were for the 2024-2025 council term. The only thing that is going to matter is what did that council do to get jobs and housing? Because long-term, that's the only thing that matters. You have been coming to council for going on 10 years. And I'm correcting you, it's almost eight years. And your lawsuits are going on 20 years. And what have you accomplished with that besides a couple of injunctive relief settlements? I will correct you and tell you that there were 50 injunctive relief settlements granted to me. Then Mr. Fankhauser goes on to say, now you are on council, and I don't see you doing anything besides running a health and safety committee totally off the rails, talking about passing CAT legislation and banning registered sex offenders in public places, which the law director has said the city possibly has no standing in regulating anyway. Bucyrs is 200-plus years old, and we have had cats in the city that entire time, and we all of a sudden now need to pass legislation on cats? Now you are training Clarissa up to be just like you. She shows up to the meetings, and the meetings drag on forever without ever accomplishing anything. What is the point, Vicki? What is the point of this? My response to that was, after the October 1, 24 council meeting, you approached myself and Clarissa Slater in the presence of others and yelled at me stating that I was taking the city down, I was training Clarissa to be like me, and questioned if I was going to sue the city again. Then on October 5, 24, I received a text from you saying that you were sorry that you made the comments you did on Tuesday night. Then on October 9, 24, you send me this email repeating to me the comments that you made on October 1, 24, for which you apologized on October 5, 24. Can you imagine why I'm confused? Then you go on and finally say, I politely ask you to get back to your council seat and start thinking of jobs and housing. You are almost halfway through your term and have nothing substantial to show for it. And maybe that's why things don't get done on council, is I have to read stuff like this and reply to stuff like this. And I'm trying to remain calm, but it's getting a little frustrating.
Mrs. Shireman.
Mr. President, can I make a comment concerning an incident that I had with Mrs. DeShawn?
Hmm, probably best that we don't.
Well, it has to do with, like, what you're doing.
Well, okay. Let me tell you something right now. What we just witnessed, right there, accomplishes nothing. It accomplishes nothing. We, uh, not done talking.
I have two minutes and 30 seconds left.
It's not, it's not running down. It's not running down. I called Vicki out on some stuff. And I stand by it. Because she's not helping this situation at all. Okay? So, you know, you started the meeting out here talking about somebody had 10 more seconds on the timer, and they should have been able to come up and say something again. Okay? What is the point of that? Okay? It's not going to matter. It's not going to matter. I, I agree. Mrs. DeShawn, she can find something that was a little thing and drag it in. What's your point? I, I would like to get back to the agenda. Let's move on. Well, let's give Clarissa the rest of her two minutes and 28 seconds. Continue, Mrs. Slater.
Thank you. So the reason that I brought this up is that it is, my words have been taken out of context when I say that I don't know everything. I've stated that. There's people way smarter than me. I have been reaching out for resources and working with, because I've been asked, and we've gained rapport that me and Mrs. DeShawn have been working through. The fact that we end up in these cycles, and this is not unique to this council, it just seems to be extremely aggravated situation. However, this has been going on for years, that the policies and procedures aren't being followed, or maybe they're not as apparent or easy to navigate. So my point is, is that I reached out to a parliamentarian that is willing to help Bucyrs. They are a registered parliamentarian. They draft legislation for ordinances, policies, procedures, and they also do trainings. I know it's been told before, or stated before, that people think you don't need trainings. However, I firmly disagree with that. And with my, rest of my time, I'm just going to use it to play this sound. Give me one moment. Of course, I just had it. You might not be able to hear it.
You guys are waves team for this entire city's time with your stuff. You're, you're starting to act like she was eight years ago when she was coming up at every council meeting about the municipal.
Essentially, there's not much more that you can probably hear on that. However, I just. However, I just want to point out that it is very disrespectful to approach people that way. I've never approached you that way. I've always tried to be kind and courteous, and that is part of policy and procedure and decorum. And if you're unable to lead that way, then I don't see really what—the point of your comments are.
Um, is there any other public participation for the visitor's input regarding standing and special committees and city officers? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time, we have nothing because they've all been sent back to committee. What's that? So now we're going to move on to consideration of proposed legislation for the final time, the only thing there being the 32-2024, which is a traffic control map for Pearl Street.
Proposed ordinance 32-2024, traffic control map for Pearl Street. Mending the traffic control map and file established by the—by Sections 305.01, 305.02, and 305.03 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bussaras, Ohio, to provide henceforth for the placement of a stop sign on the southeast corner of Pearl Street in Nevada Road for northbound traffic.
Any motion accepted as a final reading?
So moved.
Ms. Sherrick made the motion. Mr. Moritz seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Public participation? Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on the legislation that's been read for the final time? Don't see any public participation, so referred back to committee. The only one is the 32-2024. And then the committee reports on pending legislation. Mr—oh, I'm sorry. Health and Safety Committee, Mrs. DeShawn.
Health and Safety Committee is favorable to proposed ordinance number 32-2024.
Further consideration of pending legislation, the traffic control map for Pearl Street being on its final reading. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 32-2024?
So.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Ordinance 32-2024 is duly adopted. And moving on, old and unfinished business. It's been brought to my attention that something was tabled on the April 16th, 2024, um, regarding Mr. Myers' absence from that meeting. So we would have to officially do something with that on old—and unfinished business right now in order to correct that, so...
Mr. Finkhauser.
Ms. Sherrick.
May I make a motion to approve, uh, the absence of Mr. Myers on the, um, April 16, 2024 meeting?
You mean, a motion to excuse him?
Yes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Sherrick made a motion to excuse Mr. Myers' absence on the April 16th, 2024. Mr. Hickman seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Abstained.
Okay, we had, uh— it—it passes. Mr. Myers is excused from the April 16th, 2024 meeting. Any other old and unfinished business? Seeing none, newer miscellaneous business? Mrs. DeShawn.
At our March 18th, 24 council meeting, the trap neuter return program for cats was referred to the Health and Safety Committee meeting, and it's identified on our open projects list as trap neuter return. Now, this particular matter is addressed under Bussaras Codified Ordinance, Chapter 505, which is entitled Animals and Fowl. Since we're going to be having individuals come this Thursday to discuss dog bites and prohibited animals, which also fall under Bussaras Codified Ordinance, Chapter 505, just to make it clear, I wish to refer Bussaras Codified Ordinance, Chapter 505, to the Health and Safety Committee as well.
I'll second that.
Um, Mrs. DeShawn made a motion to make the referral. Mrs. Sherrick—Ms. Sherrick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any other new—but—newer miscellaneous business? Nobody's absent that needs excused. So what referrals do we have? Ms. Wise.
Uh, 2025 Airport Improvement Grant to Public Lands and Buildings, Approval of the 2025 Tax Budget to Finance, Appropriations for Park and Rec Electric to Finance, and Bussaras Codified Ordinance, Section 505, Animals and Fowl to Health and Safety.
Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Sherrick made the motion.